It's Wednesday, July 13th, 2022, 6:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners is called to order. If you will, join Attorney Trask in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past, the future, as well as the rights and needs of both the individual and our community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. This we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Here.
Commissioner Kerr.
Here.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Sir, a second?
A second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried by to zero.
Next is proclamations and presentations. I don't think we have any proclamations tonight, so we'll go straight to presentations. First is Madeira Beach Youth Softball. Mr. Gomez, will you take the meeting from here?
Yeah, go ahead. Madeira Beach Softball.
Thank you. My name's Dan Griffin. We're gonna bring our girls in real quick. I'm a coach on the 14U Madeira Beach Youth Baseball and Softball Softball Team. And just so you know, this is your 14U state champs. Woo! And we also have one team going to the World Series in two weeks, or next week, next Tuesday, and that's our 12U team. And they were runner-ups. And if you'll indulge me a minute, I'm gonna tell you a story about rec departments, community, and kids. So there's an interesting thing that happens when community takes a step back and thinks about their kids. We think about these girls, we think about boys. And so, my kids have been a part of the Madeira Beach Rec Program since 2010, in sports, in the rec center, aftercare, and events that have been held here on these grounds and on the old grounds. And it matters because there are folks in attendance tonight that have been with us from the beginning. So folks like Jay Hatch, Vice Mayor Andrews, Chris Metco, Colin Shaw, longtime employees of the city that have continued to foster these programs, so kids like this get a chance to go to Jensen Beach to be world champs. And now to share a little bit of history about our league. I joined as a board member in 2010. We were a Little League. We were restricted by boundaries. In 2000... Vice Mayor Andrews, I think it was 2014, when we decided it was time to leave Little League because we were restricted. And we opened up, Madeira was gracious enough, to open up this city for us to draw from Pinellas County. We have since sent teams every year since 2017 to the World Series, which is pretty amazing. I left the board. We now have the second-largest district in the entire state of Florida for all youth softball. We also field baseball programs. What's really cool is when I pick my kids up from Madeira Beach Fundamental, I see a lot of these kids, they're all wearing your brand. And so, that is our give-back to the community. And so, we appreciate that. The last thing I'd like to share is the power of the businesses and the individuals in your community, just to name a few, because I know we're going to leave some off. But the following businesses have stepped up to help with our ability to go down and spend eight days in a hotel to play this World Series, also with the 12U team. Folks like Pete's Sushi, Coastal Taco, Bronze Lady, Dockside Dave's, 7-Eleven, Shepherds, Trash Pirates, Beggins, Caddies, Crabbies, Mr. Carnes, The Reef, the Madeira Beach Legion, and many, many others. We've also had tons of individual contributors on our Facebook page that live in Madeira and support these kids. So again, it's a testament, when things come together around kids, what you can do and the opportunity that you can have. So with that, we want to say thank you for your continued support, the ability to have our games on these fields, to host our district tournament here, and to be a recognized name in the state of Florida, and also in the World Series. Because trust me, as a district commissioner, when Madeira Beach softball showed up, people didn't want to play us, and they don't want to play us. And that happened about five years ago, and we decided, we're gonna put the best product we can on these fields, provide the best coaching possible, and it wouldn't be without this city and those businesses that have made that possible. You guys have always been the largest sponsor and title sponsor of our league, basically by allowing us to play here. So we want to say thank you, and we thought it was important to present this team to you because the other team couldn't be here. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, have you got something for these folks?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Andrews?
No, I mean, that's, you know, I'm a little too close to the issue here because this goes back a long way from me. This goes back from my first year as rec director, when we made the big switch over. And my only caveat, and Dan will laugh about this, I sat in a room with about 10 guys that were three times the size of me, and I told them, I go, "Look, you guys can have the field, but you gotta, we gotta get rid of the Gulf Beach's Little League logo. We gotta have Mad Beach across their chest." So I bragged about it before, I'll brag about it a hundred times. I mean, we have thousands of little ambassadors running all over the countryside with Mad Beach pet plaster across their chest. And we couldn't do a better job advertising if we wanted to. And I think our job as a community, you know, a lot of people go, you know, there was this big push a while back to get rid of the rec center and get rid of rec programming and things like that, you know, that it doesn't make money. Rec centers aren't supposed to make money. Rec centers are a service to the community, right? So just like a fire department, or, you know, a library for that matter. Libraries don't make money, okay? But we figured out a way, way back then, to make this league actually profitable for the city. And that's not even supposed to happen. You're supposed, I mean, rec programs are supposed to drain from the city, and we were able to do that. So that's why, over the past, gosh, I guess we've gone back, every time they've gone to the World Series, we've given them some type of stipend from the city in order to help defer some of the costs. Eight days in a hotel for some of these families, especially with inflation the way it is and the crunch that is, is gonna be difficult for them to do. And I know we've had a great deal of support from our local business community, and I've watched Joe's posts on Facebook, and we've gotten a lot of individual donations. But I would think that, last year, I think we were able to donate $10,000 to them in order for this trip. I would like to make a motion to donate $10,000 again this year for the Madeira Beach Youth Baseball and Softball Program to go and try to bring us back to gold this year.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second on this?
A second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Public comment?
Yes.
Public comment?
You're right. Sorry about that. Public comment.
I just want to start off and say I'm so proud of all the kids that participate in Madeira Beach Little League and softball. So proud to be able to help out a little bit. Myself, and Mr. Beggins, Mr. Winters, Mr. Everett, gentleman that couldn't be here, John Mayer, he's chairman of our Treasure Island Madeira Beach Chamber, he's with Johnson Brothers Bridge Builders. He was generous enough to make a donation of $1,000. So I think community, we got about $5,000 that we want to inspire you guys to double that. So we'd like to present these checks to the Little League and wish them the best of luck in the World Series.
Great. Thank you. City Clerk, will you call the roll now?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried by to zero.
Bring us back another trophy. I know y'all won the World Series a couple of years ago, so bring another one back.
Well, to be fair, this is the first state champion that we've ever had, so we're gonna go for all three.
Very cool. Very cool. Thank you. Okay, next is the 40th Annual Johns Pass Seafood Check Presentations. Mr. Hatch, come right up and do the honors for us.
Well, long story short, we had a, for the 40th Annual Johns Pass Seafood Festival this past January, we had a handful of groups that helped us with the bartending and basically throughout the event. So part of our deal was, you know, in return to their helping us out, we were gonna contribute back to their organizations, and, you know, just a nice way to give back in the same way they did for us. So we've got a total of five checks here, and we're gonna just, I guess, run through those real quick and get a photo with them. Mr. Mayor, your name's on them, so if you want to come down here.
Okay. All right.
Let's see. Second person, Mr. Mayor first? Yeah. All right, so the first group, we have the Seabird Sanctuary. You can just come up here.
Thank you. I have a couple people here for a second.
Yeah.
Can I thank everybody?
Yeah, of course.
Hi, I'm Christina Chilbert with the Seaside Seabird Sanctuary. Today I have a couple volunteers. I also have the director of the hospital with me as well, and we just want to say thank you so much for welcoming us to your community. We rescue about 4,000 birds a year, and a lot of them are in Madeira Beach. I'm a resident here. I love my beach, and I love my town, and I just want to thank you again for letting us be a part of this. Thank you so much.
I got Rufus.
Okay, there it is.
You're gonna stand over by there. Perfect. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you. Can I keep this?
Sure.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you very much. Thank you.
All right, so the next one is Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Tampa Bay and Guardian Adlightum Foundation of Tampa Bay. So they had quite a handful of group and representative here, so. Pam here, who is a representative of multiple groups around here, so.
That's my thing. Thank you very much. Madeira Beach has always been a sponsor and a supporter of the American Legion, the VFW, the Elks, and we're just very proud to partner and have you guys be our presenting sponsor. And I hope that in the future, when the new leadership takes over the parade, that they renew that resolution and do it again. So thank you very much.
As soon as she sets that one down, we can let her come back up here. And then, we've got quite a few members of the Friends of Madeira Beach Parks and Rec, it's the newly formed group, and they did a ton of work that weekend and helped make this possible. So if you guys are members, feel free to come up here, get in the big picture, so we can, you know, help spread the word with that, so.
On behalf of the Friends of Madeira Beach Parks and Rec, I just want to thank everybody. It's new, and we're growing, and I want to, Marcus Winters is a huge proponent of this. We're doing the Final Fridays events in Johns Pass, and we have a few goals. Number one is to get a new bell tower in Johns Pass, to have more events and bands and more community involvement, Christmas tree stands. So these donations are going for that as total nonprofit. The other thing is we're looking for some entry signs to come into the city, and then, under Jay's guidance, to redo the dog park and just make enhancements there. So that's just the first of the list of enhancements to the city that we're doing. And it's been great, and Caddies and Marcus have been a huge sponsor with the bands and the stages for Final Friday. So if you haven't been coming out, please come out. It's just a lot of fun. And then, we're proud to be the housing for Trash Pirates as well, so very great community. So thank you for everybody, and come on out, Final Fridays.
She still thinks it's a birthday.
All right, so with that, that, I guess, officially closes the book on Seafood Fest for this year. And luckily, we're exactly six months out from the next one, so we start planning tomorrow. So be looking for information, volunteers, we'll probably reach out to the same groups, but we're looking to continue to grow it and make it a better event every year. So thank you all for your support and allowing us to do it, and, you know, we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is public comment. Right? I thought the Trash Pirates just got their check. This is another one, huh? Okay. Son of a gun, I'm gonna become a Trash Pirate. Okay, next is Trash Pirates Check Presentation. There's that attack dog again.
Marcus Winters from Caddies. You guys were kind enough to work with us and let us open and provide a restaurant, an employment on the, on our beautiful Gulf of Mexico here in paradise in Madeira Beach. As I was going through the process, and as we were getting everything set up, I met these two wonderful ladies here beside me. And what they do for the beach and for our community is just tremendous. So obviously, it's very important to us that the beach is taken care of, that everyone gets to enjoy it, and that everything is done. So we put a little, put a little squeeze on the budget, and we want to help these ladies out and help this group out, and just keep doing what they're doing, and we just want to say thank you very much. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Marcus. I would also like to thank Madeira Beach Friends of Parks and Rec, because without them setting up our nonprofit, we wouldn't be able to accept donations like this. And we just want to do everything we can to make Madeira Beach the cleanest beach town in Florida. And I want to thank Marcus Winters and Caddies, because they have really stepped up and become a intricate part of our community with helping the Trash Pirates and keeping their grounds clean and getting their employees involved with our movement. Thank you, Marcus.
Marcus, thank you for all you do. Seriously.
Thank you, Marcus.
Okay, next is public comment. Any public comment? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address. This is for anything that is not on tonight's agenda.
Correct.
And you have three minutes to speak.
Jean Farnin, 574 Johns Pass Avenue. This is not on the agenda, and I haven't seen it really addressed in a public meeting, but it has to do with the sunshine violation lawsuit and the additional attorney's fees by Mr. Trask's firm that allegedly have been approved by our city manager, but not yet confirmed. And we are already paying for legal representation through our insurance. And so, I would like someone to address why we're getting these bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Before we do, may I make one comment? On page three, it was mentioned that, bear with me, that I had mentioned that in the master plan, that the parking garage is not what the residents wanted. If that's the way it came out, that's not quite, wasn't quite my intent, you'll have to go back to the video. But what I believe I said is the garage, mostly the structural bridge across Gulf Boulevard. And just for the record, the plan does mention multiple times that we need additional parking, parking structures. So that is in the plan, and that's endorsed by the plan. But on page 50, the last paragraph, it says, "Under no circumstance shall a structural bridge cross over Gulf Boulevard from one piece of property to another." And it goes on, and that's what I was referencing. Whether it's a good idea or not, that's not what I'm debating. I just wanted to clarify the minutes, that's all.
Make sure that gets corrected. I'll let Laura know.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve with that exception?
I'll make that motion to approve with the exception I just stated.
Sir, a second?
A second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried by to zero.
Okay, next is public hearings. First is Ordinance 2022-07, update of the CIP, second reading and public hearing. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Ordinance 2022-07, an ordinance to the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Madeira Beach to update the capital improvement program, CIP schedule, of capital improvements for fiscal years 2021 through 2025, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of Ordinance 2022-07 by title only.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comment regarding this amongst the commission?
I do have a comment. I don't know if this is the proper time to make this comment, but I'm gonna make it because it has to do with budgets for '23, '24, '25, and the major budgets. I want to endorse what Commissioner Andrews has brought up several times about the utility grid. Our electric utility grid is aging and unreliable. He's mentioned that it needs to be updated whenever road improvements are done. My point is that we can't wait for that. We shouldn't wait for that. We're in the best financial position we've ever been, that I know of, and I'd like to get it in the budget conversation to get upgrades to our utilities, undergrounding our utilities in the residential areas, anywhere left in Madeira Beach after Gulf Boulevard's done.
Well, that'll be after Gulf Boulevard's done, though, and we've got quite an expenditure on Gulf Boulevard. Director Lepfer, I've got a couple of questions, and that is fiscal year 2022, $1,053,000 for undergrounding, and my question is, I thought we were going to go ahead and knock this out this year, but I see it year after year on that. Is that, is that not the undergrounding?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
So that's the penny for Pinellas money, so we don't get that all at one time.
Right.
It's annual. Yes, our plan is still to finish from County Park South.
Okay.
And we should have those numbers by then.
And out of curiosity, do you know what the costs are per mile now? I know when they did my street a number of years ago, it was $1 million a mile, and...
I have a rough estimate of what it's gonna cost to finish Gulf Boulevard, and it's roughly 4.5 million.
In a stretch of two miles that's already partially done, so...
Correct.
Think long and hard about doing that in all of the residential areas. That's a major, major expense where we'll probably be having to assess the residents quite a bit of money, so...
We are looking into grants for that with our utility consultant, but we're in the early stages of that. We're trying to finish Gulf Boulevard.
And also discussing it with Duke Energy on whether or not they should be doing that on their own for upgrading their utilities. There may be some funding in that. I know they just replaced a lot of the poles on 150th, when they probably could have just as easily on that project gone underground, so...
I agree.
Anyhow, I just, I did want the commission to have an idea of what they're facing cost-wise on this. We're talking, well, in this stretch, two miles long, we're $4.5 million to finish it, and we've already spent millions...
I'm not exactly sure on the numbers. We would have to come back.
Several million dollars already.
We've been working on undergrounding since 2015.
Yeah.
And we've done two phases.
Yeah. So I just want everyone to keep, you know, keep in mind what these expenses are that we're going to be running into. So I would like to see us finish Gulf and maybe even finish 150th, because that's the entrance and the main road in the city. And then, look at other areas after that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the, obviously, these conversations have gone on for a long time, and I have a contact over at Duke, and we've thrown the idea back and forth. And their whole stance on it's very simple. They're going, they want to wait until after Gulf Boulevard's done, or at least all the plans are done, in order to do it, to have an intelligent conversation with about it. Megan's... Megan's a thousand percent correct, there's a lot of grants out there, that they want to, they, they definitely want to move towards that. Are they going to flit the whole bill? Absolutely not, they're not going to spend all that money, uh, to underground the utilities here just for our benefit, because then they'd have to do it everywhere else. But, um, they have grant writers, they have people that are willing to help us as we get to that step, we're not there yet, but as we get to that step, it's going to be a big number, and it's probably going to be a number that's going to have to be broken out over five, seven, 10 years in order to do so, but I think it's definitely, and I agree with every, I endorse everything Commissioner Kerr said, with a community like this, I think at some point, that's where we gotta go. We can't just keep doing road projects and not do this and just disregard it and say, "Oh, we'll get back to it," because, you know, it just won't happen. That's was my major reason for being as upset as I was when that Crystal Island bid came back as far over budget as it was. If it was including the underground of utilities, I might have been able to swallow a little better, so, um, but yeah, I think it's a conversation that's worth having, but we're probably not ready to have it just yet.
If I, if I might just continue, I just want to get it into the discussion on paper to move forward. It's great, wonderful that we're already having the discussions preemptively on the grants. I don't know where the grants are going to come from, um, hopefully from many places, but as technology improves and people work from home, and, you know, there's, there's so many reasons, a, this infrastructure isn't so poor, I can just speak personally that it impacts home businesses, it impacts, um, you know, I, I know I personally have had to come home and just throw out a freezer because no power. So it's, you know, I haven't lived that many places, but when you have neighbors coming to you, just in my court, 75% work from home. So a robust electric grid is very important, and just the, the community deserves the underground. So I just need to have, would like to see it put in a written plan somewhere on the, on the agenda. That's our, that's my comment.
Is there any public comment on this?
Chuck Dillon, 529 Lillian Drive. I was involved with Crystal Island two and a half years ago. What I was informed, Duke Energy would only do that with a 10 to 12-foot easement beyond where your easement is. They wanted free and clear, and that would be the only way, they were going to, excuse me, underground it during that project. Also, the cost estimate was 10 to 12,000 dollars per household. So right there, 250 houses, you know, it was a quarter million dollars to potentially underground, but then also you had to give up 10 feet of your property, which, I don't know, i- i- it's just something whether or not that has changed because they didn't want to deal with any obstacles or any obstructions, so they were going to be going completely in your yard. That's what I heard two and a half years ago, and that was the prices two and a half years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do want to point out, this is a good time to be bringing up this and other issues like that, because we are amending our comprehensive plan this year. So, um, working with Public Works and coming up with language, dealing with these issues, and also some background as to how they would be paid for and how they'd be financed in the future, um, is all part of the comp planning process, and it needs to be in the plan in order for you to fund it in the future, so this is, this is the right time for that. And, um, the comp plan writing staff is sitting right here with us, so we have taken note.
And what happens if we have a homeowner that refuses to sign a right-of-way?
That definitely interrupts the process, we'll bring back, um, discussions on what the options are and how that's handled. Right now, I don't have information in front of me to deal with that.
Okay, because I know beach nourishment has stopped in the towns north of us because there are homeowners that won't sign the right-of-way for the Corps of Engineers to do the beach nourishment?
Yes.
Any other comments on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-07.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is Ordinance 2022-08, C1 Zoning District, third reading and public hearing. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor, this is Ordinance 2022-08, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 110 zoning, Division 5, C1 tourist commercial, Section 110-256 definition, purpose, and intent, Section 110-257 permitted uses, Section 110-262 maximum building height, Section 110-263 maximum lot coverage, Section 110-264 impervious surface ratio ISR, Section 110-265 special requirements of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira, Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the third and final reading of Ordinance 2022-08 by title only.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion.
Uh, if I might, um, and this goes to Director Portow, and, um, brought this up in the planning, when this was in the planning stage, Section 110-257 permitted uses, uh, staff believes the code intended to allow tourist dwellings...
Have you got a page on that, excuse me for interrupting?
Page 41, um, of 288. Uh, staff believes the code intended to allow tourist dwelling units, but failed to include it in the list permitted. At the time, Jenny replied and she, she gave good reasons why, and, um, we went ahead and passed it in the Planning Commission, but for the record, could you, could you speak to that?
Sure. To be, the, the permissions and uses and things and densities and intensities, all those definitions, um, that are brought in detail in the land development regs originate in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, when it was, um, written, was obligated to have policies that addressed and protected existing development patterns and provided for the future. One of the things the comp plan did amend, um, and adopt, because we didn't have a comp plan before that here, it adopted a map showing that that, the Johns Pass area, which is, you know, the one that's affected here, um, allowed for a mix of uses including tourist accommodations. At that time, if those of you who have been here a while will remember, that there were a lot of little rooming houses and cottages and things in the district at that time, which is an area that's largely parking lot now, um, but there were a scattering of, of those, and that, in fact, historically, um, the, the pass was originally, Johns Pass Village was originally developed as a tourist and fishing accommodation area. So, in, in fact, once the first homestead was gone, the first building out there was a hotel. It got blown down a lot and then rebuilt several times, but the hotel was the first, um, non-homestead building out there. So when the consultants provided you with the comp plan, they gave you a la, a map showing that that is a mixed-use area. Now, by law, once you had adopted the comprehensive plan, you had one year to amend your LDRs and to bring them into compliance with that comp plan, or, and to keep them in compliance with the comp plan. The only way to pull out of the LDRs was to go back and change the underlying comp plan policies. So your policies state that, that that's a mixed-use area, that it does allow tourism. It also states that it would be the policy of the community to promote and support tourism activities and growth in the community. So, um, any changes that came to the LDRs later that made that impossible to implement those land use changes, um, were in conflict with the comprehensive plan and also with the state law, 163, that required those, those compatibilities. I don't think anybody did that on purpose. Gradually, what they had done is put in the PD language, it allows you to do a PD, but then also tied it to the county's comprehensive plan, um, process for implementing a PD in a mixed-use district. The problem is, as we've come back to you and showed you, um, and we've been taking that reference out of all of the districts, because we don't have the capacity in town to have the kind of land development code in place with, with graphics and details and, um, uh, to, in order to accommodate the county's requirements for the use of that section of their comp plan. So, um, what we had done is, we've taken that reference out and referring everybody back to the city's own comprehensive plan and its current code with the provision that, or the understanding that we're in the process of updating all of those things. Um, so, um, I don't think it was ever the intent to adopt a land development regulation that restricted the city from using its own comprehensive plan, because it's not consistent with state law on the issue and on planning practice. I also don't think they understood at the time they were doing it that there was no way to implement the county's plan, and again, because the county's plan and policy continuously changes kind of in the background there. So it's an ongoing target. And I don't think anybody intentionally violated anything, that's why I think it was a mistake. I've seen other mistakes in there, some which were even in conversation documented. For instance, the fact that Pelican Lane was made R3 without a land use change, so that you can't use the R3 because it's in violation of the underlying land use to do so. That, that was clearly a mistake, and, and the staff in its presentation even stated that they didn't think it was a problem. They didn't look deep enough at it, they didn't make the comparisons. Keeping in mind that over the years, your staff hasn't even been staff here for the most part, you've had one person at a time in your community development department for years, and you were relying for implementation on Treasure Island at some point and on the counties at other points, and they were not familiar with your comp plan or with your land development regulations. So there's things all over town that are inconsistent, and it wasn't anybody's intent to create that situation, but you didn't have somebody here representing you, looking over all the details and coming back to you with recommendation, recommendations on both the land development regs and the comprehensive plan. You have updated your comp plan since then several times, um, but even those updates created kind of inconsistencies within both the comp plan and the LDRs because they weren't coordinated by somebody who was spending more time on it. You know, consultant comes in, does one job, has kind of a formulaic process for fixing things for everybody, and then leaves. So when you run into problems later, they're not immediately available to fix that for you, and you've been relying on consultants, depending throughout previous processes.
Thank you, I just wanted to add, my reading of the master plan tends me to believe that it was intended as well.
The comprehensive plan or the master plan?
The Duane Plan.
Yeah, that was never adopted.
Yeah, I understand, but it's, but it is actually, it's listed in, on our, on the city website as the master plan.
Uh, that doesn't mean it's official.
I know, but, but in, in previous conversations that we've had publicly, it, it is used, even though it's never been...
Yeah, well, we have, we've not been implementing it, but we have been trying to, to, to bring out the parts that apply and try to get them recognized. It, it's a lot of, um, at this point, it's almost age-old, I hate to say that because it came around the same time I did it as a planner, but, um, it, it's got a lot of strategy for creating positive walkable pedestrian-level community, which you want to implement wherever you can, especially in an area like the village.
Right. I'd, I'd love to see the master plan updated and codified, but thank you.
Uh, Ms. Portel, just, these probably seem like basic questions, but, uh, some residents have asked me to ask them. Could you, could you talk about the difference between, uh, requirements for dwelling units and tourist dwellings, because they're both on there?
Sure. I, that's actually a confusion just about everywhere, actually. When we first started doing, uh, this comprehensive plan back in the mid-eighties, uh, in accordance with the State Land and Water Management Act, um, they really weren't counting tourist accommodations as units, because that was so confusing. The unit was supposed to be a residential unit, and that needed, um, a kitchen and a way to store and prepare food. That's become less and less of a requirement as the building code has been amended over the years, and what constitutes a kitchen is pretty minimal these days. But, um, the intention was that you, you didn't really set up hotels as density as such, but I don't think the intent also recognized the impact that individual hotel units can have out here, and it's probably good that we do count them as density of some sort, because nowadays, you know, they build them as suites and they, some of them have what constitutes a kitchen and would constitute a unit.
Is that what we've got now? I, there's a, I see the sign-ons, I go over the bridge, there's a Madeira Beach Hotel now. Is that, is that what you're talking about with the, the, the cooking units, et cetera? It's a bigger suite?
Yeah, um, yes, a lot of things have, used to be hotel, or they used to be apartments, and now they're operating as hotels, and so they have little kitchenettes.
So, so what we're putting in tourist dwelling is, is, is more of a temporary hotel type?
They, they, a tourist, yes, it's a temporary use, it's some, and it's only allowed, it's important that we distinguish that, because they're only allowed in certain districts. You, you don't want to call everything in town the same kind of unit, because there's a difference between residential neighborhoods, and the impact that, that that would have on the residential neighborhoods is, is really severe.
So, uh, just, just one more question, it, it was written in 1983, it looks like it was revised in 2008. Were you, were you here, you, were you here at that time? No?
I wasn't here at the city...
So, why do you suppo, I mean, it seems like they would have caught it then, is there a reason why they wouldn't have changed it then?
I wasn't, like I said, I wasn't here. They updated it, um, with specific spaces, you can see throughout, that some policies in particular were updated. Um, at that time, there really wasn't as much question about the impact of, of tourism, and there was no hint that it would become a bed and breakfast world, where everybody was trying to turn every neighborhood into a tourist area. So I think they were a lot more casual about it. Now, um, also, the comprehensive plan at the county that it references was a lot more permissive and cooperative. There are other things at the time or in that era that I've seen that got approved, um, based on the county's way of doing things, even though the city's is more restrictive. And when you have two policies on the same area, you're supposed to go with the more restrictive, but they were pretty free-willing with it back there, because we didn't have any staff here saying, "Wait a minute," you know, and, and if, unfortunately, the community doesn't understand what's happening and they don't come in and ask the questions like people are asking you, then, uh, it doesn't always come to the service.
Well, they're asking me, so that's why.
Yes.
One, sorry, there is one more. Uh, the two stories versus 34 feet, what do, what do we normally define as the number of feet for a story? Like one story?
Well, yeah, I mean...
I'm sure it's diff, it's probably different for a first story than the second story.
It is, right. Because of floodplain, um, if you're counting stories, the, the upper story depends on how high that particular lot is. Sometimes you'll need the second story to start at, um, 10 feet, sometimes you need it to start at 17, based on the flood and the...
So with 34 feet being the limit now, it seems like the most it could go would be three stories? Or could it go higher?
Probably, yeah, three stories, and, and, and it allows for a pitch of a roof, so sometimes people can put an attic or something in.
But could it go?
But usually at three stories, um, what we're counting the 34 feet as, and we've tried to, um, make this uniform throughout the code, because that was another problem, is, um, where you started counting was different in every single district. So what we're proposing is you count it from the designed flood elevation. That's the base flood elevation for that piece of property, plus the four feet on top of it the city requires. So you'd count 34 from that point, so that every neighborhood has the same measurement that they can build to.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so if someone decides to request to put in a PD in, um, the village, is that affected at all by this, um, whether it's, um, has tourist resident, um, accommodations or not, or is a PD totally separate, standalone?
It, it can, it can be affected because, well, the tourism is allowed. The way it reads right now, if, even if we took just the, uh, county part out and didn't add the tourism dwelling units, the way it reads right now then would be that you could only do tourism if you had a PD, but what... do tourism if you had a PD, but what that concerns us is that you can, PDs are very expensive, so you could only do tourism if you came in with a big consolidated parcel of land and were putting up a whole bunch of units. We wanted it to, to recognize the use of tourism so that you could get back to having the smaller, you know, kind of boutique-type things that don't require a PD necessarily. PDs are always on the options list, and they are meant to replace zoning, so you need to have as much detail in them defining the way the property is used, the density and the intensity, not just how it's used on the ground, but exactly what uses you allow inside of it. All of that needs to be specified in the PD, and, and we need to make sure that that's very specific in the PD language, not later in the development agreement or something like that, that it needs to stay with the zoning. But you do allow that throughout the community. What we were proposing for the new things that will be coming forward to you is that you need to decide what the, what the development intensity and height and style is a maximum you would allow even for a PD. You don't want it to be wide open, even though the land use, will restrict it by the number of units and, and the intensity on the ground, you still want to specify what kind of character you're looking for, especially in this type of district. And we're bringing that forward.
Okay, thank you. I guess I look at this and I see with a 34-foot tall building, if it's tourist accommodations, it's not going to be high density or, or anything like that. It's going to be bringing fewer people than restaurants or nightclubs and things like that. So I don't have anything against this.
Is there any public comment on this? Yes, sir.
I'm Thomas Powers, John's Pass Enterprises, 12945 Village Boulevard. A landlord there, and I'm listening to all this, I've been here 30 years, and I'm not sure about what I'm hearing. There's all the clauses, I'm sitting back there reading it and so forth, and what does that mean to me if a hurricane come in tomorrow, or we had a fire tomorrow and it burned down my building? What does it mean to me towards building back?
Linda, if you'd like to, we don't normally answer questions during public comment, but I'll defer to Linda on this.
Sure. Currently, we have policy that states you can redevelop if you, your building suffers from some kind of declared disaster, especially a hurricane or a big storm. Even those that, if a big fire wiped out everything, I think the mayor can also declare an emergency, and anything that big would be an emergency in the town this small for sure. It would allow you to build back with, within the same footprint, and the question would be that we want to make sure that we allow things to be built like what you have without having to go through the restrictions of building back exactly the same, because there are, there are setbacks and things in here that don't apply. So even in the redevelopment section, it says you can build back on the same footprint, it will also say, as long as you meet this code and this code and this code, and you may not be able to get to all of them because some of them are parking, for instance, and heaven knows, we don't have all of the required normal parking down there on the village. So the intent is to bring back a code that allows you, whether you have, suffer an emergency or not, allows you to repair and replace your building with something similar to what you have in order to maintain the character of the village.
So this code doesn't, it doesn't change when I'm allowed to build back? I had heard rumors that there was going to be some limitations to what you were, were able to build back, and I was real nervous and real scared of being here for 30 years and spending my life building my building, building my businesses and stuff, and then all of a sudden, we have a fire, and I'm not able to build back, or I'm able to build back part of it, but I'm still obligated, I got to pay all the property taxes, I got to generate enough customers to come in to feed the city parking meters, I got to pay all my other taxes, my Advilor taxes, my business taxes and stuff, but my building all of a sudden is cut in half, so this doesn't affect that.
No, the, the intent to making these kind of changes is actually to, to protect the small property owner in particular, to, to be able to come back with, with a similar type development and to protect that investment, because planning is only implementable if it's also economically and financially feasible. The intent's not to mow down the, the village one building at a time, no. What we'd like to do is maintain the character there, but our concern is that if you don't have an emergency-type development, the way the code reads right now, you don't have a right to put back what you've got, so if you just, like, were eaten up by termites and needed to replace the whole building, that's not that far out of imagination. We've seen the inside walls after a flood, so, so, but you couldn't do it under the current code. You couldn't build back something that fit right in there and took up the whole space. We want to make sure that we get to a point where that is allowed and that we're maintaining that walkable pedestrian level development along village. We also really trying to put in language that emphasizes the importance of articulation between the buildings, because I don't think anybody in the community would like to see everything gone in a hurricane or fire and one long building, monolithic building put up in place of what we have on village right now. It would ruin the aesthetic and the charm and the attraction that the area has right now. It definitely affect it, and it would affect the character of the whole community, but lots of small property owners would end up.
Yes.
Losing for that.
Yes, I appreciate that. I think you answered my question. I was just concerned that I would be able to build back after spending all that time building the business up, and like I say, I'd been hearing stuff that, no, you're not going to be able to build back, and I'm going, whoa.
Yeah.
So that was my concern. Thank you, Linda, you explained it very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chuck Dillon, 529 Lillian Drive. Base flood elevation is the same elevation all across the island, isn't it? So that's not going to change.
No. Base flood elevation measured on a specific piece of property is different. It's a 15-year, it, it's generally about 15 feet, but some properties are higher off of the, of the geological height of sea level. So it's counted from sea level, and if your property, we have some properties here, they're as high as seven feet off sea level. So their base flood, if you were, if you were taking it as a 15-foot, their base flood elevation on that property would be only eight feet.
Okay, so it, it's not really the base flood eleva, the base flood elevation is staying the same, because when I built my house, base flood elevation was 12-foot, and so I'm, I'm high property. I mean, you know, so my property is like five-foot, so I only had to build up seven feet above the ground to get all the electricity off there. So, but now, the, the base flood stays the same wherever it is.
Yes.
Whether, whether your property is high or low, whether you're prone to flooding or not.
Right.
Okay, so then, I didn't see in here, where's the 34 feet? Is that 34 feet above base flood elevation? I mean, I thought I remember.
Yes, it was actually the intent, and it's the reason we're making some of these changes, I believe. Is that?
Page 51.
51, okay. Oh, wrong.
Okay. And then we really need to get away from this question and answer because this is public comment.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to determine the 34 feet. Is it 34 feet above base flood elevation, 34 feet, you know? So that everybody is on the same page and understands.
It's 34 feet above design elevation, and that's the base flood plus four, because right now, the city has adopted a four-foot freeboard requirement.
Okay.
And it's, that's the same, that's what we're trying to do is make it the same everywhere.
Okay, and I'm just understanding for everybody, I mean, because I thought I knew about it, but the gray areas, and I'm very glad that we're clearing up all its gray areas because there's been nothing but problems with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Yes, and you know what, before I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, we all owe Linda a great deal and her staff a great deal of gratitude because she's right. I mean, for years before this, we had one person in planning and zoning. None of this stuff would have ever gotten condensed, and, and as Chuck was saying, we're all on the same page, and that is just a credit to Linda and her staff. So I personally want to thank you, and I'm sure the rest of the board does as well. But I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-08.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-15, amendment to city charter, section 2.2, board of commissioners created qualifications, term of office, and vacancies, sub-paragraph B, qualifications and term of office, and an amendment to city charter, section 4.8, induction of board of commissioners into office meetings. This is second reading, Mr. Trask.
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance 2022-15, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, submitting to the electors of the city of Madeira Beach a proposed amendment to the city charter, section 2.2, board of commissioners created qualifications, term of office, and vacancies, sub-paragraph B, qualifications and term of office, and a proposed amendment to city charter, section 4.8, induction of board of commissioners into office meetings to provide that the terms of all members of the commission, including the mayor, will begin upon induction into office at the board of commissioners' first meeting following the election and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2022-15 by title only.
Floor is open for discussion.
Okay, in somewhat pigeon English, what this one is, is just to, just have everybody, once they're elected, to be able to show up at the first meeting and contribute.
Yes. Now, one, I've got one question on that, though, and that is like what we ran into in this last election where there was a recount. If there's a public meeting in between where it hasn't been determined what one of the, one of the positions is, who is in that position? Is the other commissioner sworn in? Is only one sworn in at that point? And then you wait until, until after the determination for the second one to be sworn in?
No, there would be no swearing in of a person who has not been elected to office, and you would not, the supervisor elections and the canvassing board there would not make that determination of who was elected to office until that challenge has been completed. So as for your question as to who's going to sit there, neither one of those people would sit there unless they were a sitting commissioner, in other words, they were an incumbent.
Well, so the, the one that did not have to be recounted, he wouldn't be able to sit either?
They had to certify the results first.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they won't certify the election until they've done it on both of them?
Right.
Okay.
Any of that until then.
Okay, I cleared it up in my mind then. Thank you. Any other comments?
So even if a, even if a special meeting had to be created, just to, you could, you could do that, so, no, I'm, I think we've had it cleared up personally.
Yeah, I think this is a following regular meeting. Is that correct?
It's upon induction into office, board of commissioners, the first meeting following the election, so it could be a special meeting, it could be a regular meeting.
Okay.
And, and it could be a workshop, right?
That's correct.
Right, a regular meeting, right.
Okay. Any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I move we pass ordinance 2022-15.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-16, prescribing the manner of holding general elections, providing for polling locations for election, providing for two charter amendments. Mr. Trask.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 2022-16, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, calling for a general election on November 8, 2022, for two proposed charter amendments, providing for publication, providing, I'm sorry, providing for publications, authorizing election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County canvassing board as the canvassing board for the November 8, 2022, general election, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2022-16 by title only. I do want to bring to your attention, there has been a change since the first reading of this ordinance, and it has to do with the number of words associated with, I'm, I'm sorry, I got, that was on the last one, wasn't it? Yeah. I wanted, so, no, there's no changes to this one, I apologize.
Okay.
Get my two mixed up.
Floor is open for discussion. Any public comment on this?
Chuck Dillon, 529 Lillian Drive. If I read this correct, there's going to be a second polling place for the six or eight people that are over in District 301?
We automatically have two polling places.
So has that one always been open?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just was completely unaware of it. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Chuck. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-16, prescribing the manner of holding the general election.
I'll second it.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-18, section 15, property rights, elements of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Trask?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is ordinance 2022-18, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the city of Madeira Beach comprehensive plan, creating a new section 15 to be titled Property Rights Element, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2022-18 by title only.
Floor is open for discussion.
Would you like a presentation on this as first reading?
Sure.
And we were trying to accelerate this, so we'd double advertise.
Okay.
To make sure it could get here this quick. In 2021, House Bill 59, amending section 163.3177 of Florida statutes, requires that all local governments to adopt a property rights element in their comprehensive plan. And it was actually assumed by many you would do that as part of your upcoming land val, or comprehensive plan amendments, but nope, they say I want it now. So we were trying to get it in place because until we get this in place, they aren't accepting anything from the city, even small amendments or corrections or anything of that nature. The language here that we've chosen is slightly amended, only slightly amended, from what we found an amalgamation of basically what had been proposed by Thousand Friends of Florida and also this, and approved already ahead of time by the city of St. Pete. So we know that it's gone through the legal review and that it's been accepted by Department of Economic Opportunity. As you can see, it's relatively simple and actually just restates rights that are already guaranteed under. guaranteed under the Constitution and other state statutes.
Okay. Thank you. Your eggs are done. Your time is up. Okay. Now, is there any comment on this?
This seems so basic. Why would they ever write this law? The cities have to have this.
I assume we had all those rights.
Yes.
You do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something that the legislature wanted to push through to make it absolutely certain. It was codified in a statute that was clear and wanted it to be in each comprehensive plan that was adopted, and then they put the deadline on it. It is in the state statute, and it is the law already, and we have to do it. If we don't do it, then we won't be able to do, as Linda had mentioned, any changes to our comp plan. So. But the statute kind of is word for, I'm not saying it's almost, it's almost word for word is what is in the statute, so.
Well, that sounds like a no-brainer, then. Okay. Any other comments? Are there any comments from the public on this? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-18, Section 15, Property Rights Element of the Comprehensive Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-19, Duke Energy Franchise Agreement, First Reading and Public Hearing. Mr. Trask?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is ordinance 2022-19, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, granting to Duke Energy Florida LLC, DBA Duke Energy, a non-exclusive utility rights-of-way utilization franchise, prescribing the terms and conditions related to the occupancy of municipal streets and rights of way in the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, for the purpose of providing electric service, providing for severability of provisions, and providing an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2022-19. Just as some background, this ordinance is actually the agreement itself. The ordinance was created in conjunction with Duke Energy. There is some people here in the audience tonight, if you have questions of them. It was basically the same franchise agreement that I negotiated in Tarpon Springs and in Bel Air Bluffs. There were some additional, was some additional language relative to turtle lighting that was added and was previously discussed at the commission meetings, and the city manager may have some comments about that. This is a 10-year franchise agreement. It does have a couple of renewals, if you want to. You have two successive five-year renewals if you want to renew it. The way that it's done is by the city providing written notice of its intent to renew within six months prior to the expiration of the 10-year agreement. It also sets forth the 6% franchise fee that will be paid, this dollar amount that's collected from each property owner and business in the city of Madeira Beach. That 6% is collected from them and paid to the city. The payment is to be received by the city or made no later than the 20th of each month. It also provides from additional language relative to expansion and contraction with other corporate limits, in other words, annexation and so forth. There's also a requirement that Duke Energy notify the city of any significant projects. In the past, that language was not in there, and so they would operate, the city may not necessarily know they're working on a huge project. They have that obligation now to notify the city in advance of that, any large projects. We think that this is a good result, and I know the city manager is going to speak for himself, but I would recommend approval of this franchise. I will tell you that the previous franchise has expired, and both the city and Duke Energy has been working on a theory that the old one is continuing on even though the actual term expired. There's some case law out there that says that both parties should be doing that, and they have done that. So you haven't been getting your franchise fees. This particular agreement, it will start upon its effective date, and so that would be just after the second reading. Once it's accepted by Duke Energy, they're going to have to sign it as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure the city manager has input, too.
Yeah. I'm just curious now. So Duke Energy is not actually paying this fee, the residents are. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's correct in every city. Yeah. Yeah. It's a pass-through.
Okay. Well, forget increasing it, then.
I think we're capped, but for that amount. I think Mr. Trask covered everything. I do want to thank Mr. Trask and certainly Duke Energy for resolving this and coming to this point, and I would be remiss if I did not add additionally, the agreement provides that we may, we have the ability to audit their books every, once every three years to make sure that they are properly billing, collecting, and remitting the franchise fee.
Very good.
I have a quick question, if I might. Residents only can get their electric from Duke Energy. Is that correct? That's...
Yes.
Okay.
Or solar, or...
Well, I know, but in a past life, when I lived in a different state, you could get it from, even though the local utility owned the lines, you could buy your power from anywhere you wanted to. I didn't know if Florida is different, or if this is because we have a franchise agreement that requires that, or just looking for some education.
They're the only provider in this area. There is no other provider. There's some language in the agreement that talks about the possibility if another provider became available, that we would have to either renegotiate this agreement, or it would, it could be eventually terminated. But the bottom line is, is that there is no other provider in the area.
Okay. Because I thought that was like federal law back when Reagan was in office, that was changed. But if there's no other provider that serves this area, then that answers my question.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-19, Duke Energy Franchise Agreement. I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yep.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carried five to zero.
Okay. Next is 2COP, Alcoholic Beverage License Application, ABP 2022-01, for Shark Boat John's Pass LLC, located at 124 Boardwalk Place, Boat Slip Number 2, 194 Boardwalk Place, Madeira Beach, Florida. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and read the quasi-judicial procedures that we're going to be following tonight. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At this quasi-judicial hearing, it's not the board's function to make law, but rather apply law that has already been established. In this quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence of the hearing demonstrates the applicant's met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find or in favor the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence of the hearing demonstrates the applicant's failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and swear in any witnesses. I don't see the applicant in the audience, but we're going to go ahead and swear in. Linda, are you going to do this? Yeah, okay. You swear the testimony we're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Mayor, it would be now time for C staff to make the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And because you have to consider only evidence presented now, I have to go through quite a bit of this, and I know you're used to hearing it, but we're going to go through it anyway. The things that you are to consider under Section 110-3534 of the Madeira Beach Code and under Section 110-539 and 1-532 are as follows. The extent to which the location and extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. In this particular case, what's being proposed is the shark boat at John's Pass, which is at Slip Number 2, 194 Boardwalk Place, be allowed to sell alcohol on the boat. Currently, they allow the customers to come and bring their own alcohol. So it's not changing the alcohol level, it's just kind of changing the placement and the monitoring. It isn't going to have any effect on the way that the community operates or negatively impact the community in any way. In fact, we thought it perhaps beneficial, it keeps some of the alcohol off the street because it's not being brought into the past, potentially half-consumed. And they have assured us that this, all the alcohol would be served only by the crew and that all alcohol is kept in a locked container. They did provide pictures of that for your review in the packet. Secondly, you need to determine the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. As was stated, this is an activity that the consumption of alcohol is already allowed on the boat. The difference is they would be selling it on the boat itself. It's not going to change the traffic pattern in any way, or the amount of traffic or parking that's required, because that would be based on square footage of area, of service area, and none of that is being affected. Number three, you need to consider whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the location for which it is proposed. The boardwalk place is located in C2, John's Pass Marine Commercial District. Alcohol sales are allowed there. They are allowed on the boat. The business address further west on the boardwalk is also an area where alcohol is allowed, although we're going to specify that the intent here is to serve on the boat and are going to specify that this alcoholic permit licensing would be for the dock location, not for the office location. Neither location is located within 300 feet of a church, synagogue, temple, or place of religious worship, a public or private school operated for the instruction of minors, or youth recreation community center. There are various other businesses that sell alcohol, including some charter boat operators, and so the sale of beer and wine is allowed use in the district and no different than what is allowed other businesses in that location. You need to consider whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety. Selling them beer and wine during the sightseeing boat tour would remove the risk of consumers bringing their own alcohol, as I stated earlier. Each sightseeing boat tour has two crew members, a captain and a crewmate. Only the crewmate would be able to sell the beer and wine to the customers of the boat, and the boat would still be selling bottled water and soft drinks as well. The alcohol would be in a cooler located on the boat, and the cooler has locks on it. And number five, you need to analyze whether the application has, the applicant has paid all full, any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties. We found no penalties or fines on the record, and they have paid fees in associating with this request. So the staff recommends approval of the applicant, or the application, number APB, ABP 2022-01, with the following recommended conditions. One, that the beer and wine can only be sold to customers going on the sightseeing tour boat. This is not intended to turn the business into a bar. That would be a different situation altogether. The selling beer and wine cannot be standalone use at this location, that, again, this is an opportunity to turn the office or the dock itself into a bar. And the beer and wine could only be sold and consumed on the boat located at Slip Number 2, 194 Boardwalk Place, and not at the ticket office. And the reason for that is if we have it in another location, we have to do a different analysis on the 300 feet in more detail.
Okay, Linda, I have a few questions for you before we turn it over to the commission. So under Section 110-539, it requires that all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property have received notice. Has that been done?
Yes. And in order to ensure there is no confusion about this, we did the 300 feet both from the dock and the business office, which is further down the boardwalk.
Okay. And that was done at least 15 days prior to today's hearing, correct?
Correct.
Did you receive any written correspondence from anyone in relation to this application?
No, we did not.
So there was no affected party notices sent either, correct?
Not to us, no.
All right. And you want to submit your staff report into evidence, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor, I don't have any other questions. I don't know if the commission has any questions. This would be the time to do that.
Okay. I do. And that is, you know, since we discussed no open containers, I would like to know that the people that are coming back on the boat, one, they're not throwing their beer cans or wine bottles in the water. They've got, they've got a container onboard for that. But the other is that they're not coming off the boat and drinking around John's Pass Village with what they were consuming on the boat.
And I would recommend those additional conditions be stated, and then we'll be able to inspect to make sure before we issue CO that everything is in place in terms of the trash receptacles and that also the code enforcement officers of the sheriff's department know what they're looking for when the boats come in and out.
Okay. Does that sound unreasonable to anyone?
No, it doesn't sound, I mean, but that's already in our code. I don't even know if we have to put that into the second part. I mean, if they're coming out of the, that's, once they're out of that, they shouldn't be leaving the establishment with any alcohol, and once they're on the street, then...
Then they're out of the establishment.
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, that's up to our enforcement to do so. These folks are, this is all part of the same group, I think, that does the pirate ship, right, Linda? These guys, they own the whole...
Yes.
Yeah, these guys are great. I mean, they, you know, we've never seen any issues with the pirate ship or anything along the lines of that. And they serve, I think they already have, they already have their 2COP for the pirate ship already. So this is a whole new endeavor for these guys, and they're spot on. Everything, if you've been down that end of the boardwalk, they keep everything spotless. They're not trying to open up a bar down there or anything like that. They just want to be able to monitor the alcohol that's there. That's all.
Yeah. I also know, though, that businesses can be sold, you know?
Yeah, very true.
And so, you know, they may be doing great, but the next guy or lady that owns the business may not be such good stewards. So that's just my two cents worth.
I have no issue putting that into the agreement. No issue at all.
I would, I would agree with the mayor, but I'd like to see it explicitly. You do show consumed on the boat, that, you know, half-empty beverages are put in the trash can as they leave the vessel.
Okay.
So, any public comment? Chuck, I hadn't heard from you in a few minutes. Okay. Is there a motion?
So now, since there's no one in the audience, there's no affected parties, the public portion of the meeting is closed, it's here for your consideration. So it's back to the commission for a motion?
No.
That's the correct way to do it? Yes?
I will make a motion to approve the 2COP alcoholic beverage license application, ABP 2022-01, for Shark Boat John's Pass LLC.
We need to get those conditions in there, too, Vice Mayor.
Okay. With the condition of disposal of any alcoholic beverages that were consumed on the boat, and no leaving the premise with any open containers.
As well as the staff conditions that were suggested by Ms. Portell?
As well as the staff conditions suggested by Director Portell.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Commissioner Kerr? Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Okay, next is contracts and agreements. First is First Amendment to the contract for grasshopper tree service. We discussed this. I think we beat this up pretty good at the workshop. Floor is open for discussion. Any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for grasshopper tree service.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is Second Amendment to Cleaning Contract with WNA Cleaning. Floor is open for discussion. Is there any public comment? City Clerk, will you call the roll? Wait a minute, I guess we need a motion, huh?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the Second Amendment to Cleaning Contract with WNA Cleaning.
A second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is Gulf Beaches Library Fiscal Year Twenty-three Budget and Service Agreement. Floor is open for comment.
They appear to be doing really good things, I think. Give them all the help we can.
I would like to say, when, when, when I first came into office back during COVID, we were paying ninety-three thousand dollars a year to the library, and nothing was getting done. In these past two years, it has been re-landscaped. It's got new air conditioning, a new roof, a new paint job. The interior has been redone. And with all that, we've gone from a ninety-three thousand dollar contribution down to a sixty-eight thousand dollar contribution. And I would say my hat's off to everyone involved. And to the Library Board, they've done a tremendous job on moving that library forward. I was in there today, in fact, walking around just to, to check out the improvements. And it's, it's, it's getting to be a first-class facility. It's way ahead of where it was. We went from five computer stations to, I think, thirteen or fourteen now. So I'm very happy with what I've seen going on over there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you know, I made a quick visit there about a week ago, and I'll echo all your sentiments. It's a whole different, we used to, when I was at the rec, we used to take the kids there all the time. And it was nowhere near what it looks like right now. And I know you're too modest to admit this, but the reason that this has all happened is because of you. And you, like I said, I know you won't take credit for it. But I think we all in the five communities, kind of just, this was just a pass-through. And nobody ever even looked at this contract or looked at the budget or took it as seriously as you did. And once you opened up everybody's eyes to it, I think, that just shows great leadership. So I want to thank you because I think that that was just an amazing thing. And I think not only are we paying less money, but we have a better facility and we're moving forward in the right direction. And I don't think anybody's ever going to take it for granted again. So thank you from, on behalf of, you know, like I said, I missed it for two years before you got here, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion to approve Gulf Beaches Library contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three Gulf Beach Library contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero-six, Fiscal Year Twenty-two Budget Amendment Two.
Can I go ahead and read the resolution?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero-six, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madera Beach, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, beginning October one, twenty-twenty-one through September thirty, twenty-twenty-two, by increasing the local option sales tax fund appropriations for expenditure and increasing the general fund revenues and appropriations for expenditure and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero-six by title only.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Commission, this item, and there's a little bit of detail included in the item, just amending our budget in a few areas. The spreadsheet kind of more, provides a little bit more details of it. I have Mr. Fitzgerald here with Leclarian, if you have any detailed questions. But we'll just go through this briefly in amending local option sales tax, replacing, due to some capital equipment purchases and using a little bit of the fund balance, due to the purchase of the, the two thousand four Pierce fire engine, which we decided to purchase rather than finance, which, just in the long run, saves a little bit of, of money related to the, the purchase of that piece of equipment. We did provide the down payment last year, and now are paying the balance of the, of the equipment. And that's in our local option sales tax fund. The second item relating to our recreation in, to complete the LED lighting that we had budgeted last year, but a little bit was carried over to the current year. And general fund, just in general, in the Recreation Department, regarding some of those line items that are listed on there, where we made adjustments for the seafood festival regarding some of the special event expenses. And then the revenue that we received is listed there. The revenue exceeded the expenses for the event. And also, we collected, utilizing some of the parking revenue to cover, that we recorded, rather, is revenue. I don't think we had done that in prior years. And that's for the recreation adjustment. And the last one in the general fund in the City Managers Department for a little bit of, a little bit of overlap this year, where you had the, my predecessor and myself currently, a little bit of overlap in the time we were here. So that leads to some of the additional expenses, as well as we increased some of the expenses for our seventy-fifth anniversary celebration that we accounted for in the promotions and public relations that we did not originally budget in the promotions and public relations line item in the department. And these additional expenses are being offset by, again, our higher-than-anticipated revenues in our parking operations. And like anything, I think that pretty much covered this budget amendment.
Do I have a motion to pass Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero-six?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is City Managers Report, June twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and really, a very little to report. No, I'm just kidding.
I saw that book you sent to us.
So June's just another, I mean, busy month, just like most of our months here. And I really, we had some of the presentations earlier to numerous organizations that have been just partnering, collaborating with the city for many, many years. And that really continues almost every month. And specifically, in keeping our city as clean as possible and the beautification, we obviously have various staff in our public works and our sanitation, stormwater and our recreation that daily, obviously contribute to that. But I mentioned, in this past month, we had the continued cleanups held between the Trash Turtles, the Trash Pirates, Keep Banelis Beautiful. We were visited by the BeBot robot that's been touring the county, but they started here in Madera Beach. And thank you to everyone who attended. Thank you, Mayor, for, obviously, your support, continuing support other organizations, including the Water Warrior Alliance and the Burn Conservancy, Ocean Conservation Alliance as well. So we really appreciate that because it really helps, again, keep the city as pristine as we can. And certainly with our ongoing budgeted amounts to continue to improve our parks, the city's going to look probably as, as well as it ever has over the, the past few years. We, other activities throughout the month, including reminding folks, since it's quite hot and humid and didn't get a thunderstorm yet today, it's extremely hot, and the importance of people staying hydrated. So thanks to Recreation folks, we did have a little event in distributing water out on the sand and with our commemorative seventy-fifth anniversary koozies. And I think people were super appreciative of, of that. And then we'll report for July, what happened in early July with other distributions out in the sand, again, help keep the city clean. Again, we continue, other events that occurred was a car show and the Music Fest, the Mad Beach Music Fest, put together by numerous businesses and the, the Veterans Boat Parade Organization as well. Lots of people enjoyed being out here in downtown. We were notified earlier this month, and it's been the subject of numerous discussions, and will be going forward. Again, great thanks to Representative Linda Chaney and our mayor and city commission. We were notified earlier, very early in June, that we did receive an appropriation for the dredging of, of John's Pass. And we continue creating and developing that project to get that completed as soon as we possibly can. Again, we were invited to attend a meeting by, by Governor DeSantis, where he announced the creation of the state guard at the American Legion here in Madera Beach. So we were excited to have the governor visit and make that announcement. The project on one-hundred-and-fortieth Avenue to repair the road that had been damaged by a contractor was completed in the latter part of this month. And unfortunately, though, that contractor also created other problems on a few side streets near there on Lilian and, and Crystal, I believe, Drive. And so those repairs will begin shortly. Other events just coming up in, listed events coming up, reminding folks to, can sign up to receive our emails and our news updates and certainly utilize our mobile app. We made some of the changes that we've discussed in our parking processes, mainly allowing overnight parking in multiple lots throughout, well, essentially every lot except Archibald and the John's Pass Park parking lot. And our enforcement has been out and about and issuing citations. And they've been doing a great job just responding to questions, informing, advocating, educating folks on, on some of the changes, simply to allow for, you know, more parking options, better parking turnover. So we are also, we've received a lot of comments regarding part of our, related to parking and public safety, we did begin, and I believe I mentioned at a prior meeting, closing the John's Pass Park parking lot at nine-thirty PM until, and then reopening at sunrise due to just, unfortunately, issues down there from vandalizing our restroom building to just cars speeding around the lot, to people not paying for parking, just a variety of issues, a lot of noise, et cetera. So that is just temporary. We've had requests from folks maybe to open the lot to allow for some of the Fisher folks that are out there overnight. And so we may be making that change over the next week. But, but the closing the lot at nine-thirty was temporary, as I'd mentioned, at least through the summer, and return that back to normal hours around Labor Day. The, as I think everyone's aware, we meant, also reminded folks about the continued, just keep vigilance on hurricane season, as well as our, our turtle season, turtle nesting, remember to leave the sand as, you know, cover up any holes and undo other, undo any sand activity that may have been done would be very helpful as now I think we're having hatchlings go out into the, into the Gulf. So we encourage, again, people to leave no trace when they do go to the sand. The rest of the report, again, contains some of the details of activity throughout June and our building, our marina, our parking functions and departments throughout the city. We have not slowed down in all of those areas. Well, perhaps in the marina, with a little bit of fuel sales, the quantity due to the higher cost of boating fuel. Some boaters are, you know, not going as far due to the, the price, I think, peaked for a gallon of fuel at six forty, six dollars and forty cents for a gallon of boat fuel. So now it's starting to come back down. But there's data here in the report of the types of activity within all of our departments. Again, as I said, really, we just haven't slowed down. Even parking experienced almost the same amount of revenue as the prior, as May and as, and April. There wasn't a significant decline as in prior years. So, again, the data, other data that the county produces mainly from the collection of the bed tax. Also, we've received passenger data at the same, from the St. Pete Clearwater International Airport, that those are continuing to see significant increases in monthly, essentially monthly all-time highs. So we know we are still having a lot of visitors come to Madera Beach. But again, as I've said many times, our priority continues to be, our top priority are, are residents and ensuring that we continue to provide the most efficient and effective services. So in our public safety component, we continue to, to ensure, remind folks of being safe when they're out on the water, whether they're boating, swimming, even just wading in the water, taking the caution if, you know, if they're out and there are any rip currents out there. And so that's really what we, the Fire Department continues to do. And also, I know they've been performing quite a bit of training. We've had, had a few water rescues this past month. So our Marine twenty-five has had quite a bit of, of usage in responding to calls. And lastly, yeah, there's lots of the marine activity and just other project data as we update. We had some seaweed on the Gulf, really, through early parts of June. And we put out some information as we were receiving calls from folks, why are you not coming out and cleaning up the seaweed? And we provided some of the information about our coastal ecosystem as this image on the screen kind of explains and how some seaweed, and it's just a part of nature and the flow of the currents in the Gulf. And although if you do go out to the water in the last couple of weeks, it's been actually significantly seaweed-free. So just responding to the, to those calls as they come in. And our recreation continued with summer program. And as they continue to plan for fall events right now, we have some, you know, upcoming softball tournaments over the next few weekends. But our, we will be, as we held in June, although it got rained out after an hour, holding the final Friday this month. That'll be on the twenty-eighth of, twenty-ninth of July, so the last Friday, at the Bell Tower in John's Pass. So again, lots of information in the report. If you have any questions, be happy to provide a response.
No, thank you. That's, that's, I'm really impressed with the amount of data you've got together for us, Robin. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If, if I might, can I just?
If, if I might, can I just ask if there's any update on the slow wake zone? And if you could just provide any comment for the residents on Crystal Drive and Lilian and what to expect over the next few weeks with the Frontier debacle?
So the, our contractor Keystone Excavating that completed the repairs on 140th, they believe started the repairs or at least started dropping off the signage and making some of the, the road cuts. They do need to repair when Frontier's subcontractors were out. They, they're boring that they did under Crystal, Lilian at the minimum. They were too close to the surface and therefore created some ridges in those streets. So since that road was recently milled and repaved just within the last year and a half, we're, we're making these repairs. We've invested significant amount, well, I mean, our residents have invested a significant amount and we are going to have those roads essentially repaired and returned to their, as they should be. Megan, if you want to add?
So not to, we'll go a little bit in detail. With that, the Crystal and Lilian and John's Pass Avenue, there is a structural fabric that is about 19 inches that holds that road together because of the flooding and, and the water table that's out there. So with, there's, there's five locations. With those areas, we then have to cut the road. We have to see if the structural fabric was damaged because if it was damaged, we then have to do a three foot overlay on each side to ensure that that road's not going to sink. Unfortunately, we don't know at this moment if the fabric has been damaged. We are pretty sure that it's been damaged in at least three locations because we did find the bore right about 19 inches. But until we get that opened up, we will not know.
How do you inspect that?
So you've seen the road cuts that are out there?
Yeah.
They're going to peel it back basically until we get down to that structural fabric, inspect that structural fabric over the top of where that bore is. And if it's not damaged, we'll put it back the way that it's supposed to be. And if it is damaged, then we then have to do three feet of overlay on each side with that same fabric, which is very, very expensive. And that's, and then we'll just go back the same way. And then we'll, luckily it's only a year old, so we should be able to match it and not have any sinkage and you'll have a little bit of difference in the color, but it's, it's unfortunate. But luckily we're only going to have three patches versus five because there's a couple that are really close to each other.
Okay. So when you, when you mentioned rolling it back, are we looking at a three foot area where that, roll that entire section that was cut out?
So for instance, the first one is at 500 Crystal.
Yeah.
So in that area, what we'll do is we're going to, where the road cut is, we're going to open that up. If we find that that fabric has been damaged, we will then have to go three feet on each side and order and take all that up. But then at 500, we're going to go 50 feet to the east and 50 feet to the west. But fortunately with that one, it's close to 504, which is the next one. So we'll have one patch there. And then the next one after that is 537 Crystal. And then there are two on Lilian, which there will only be one patch versus two separate. Unfortunately Frontier did a lot of damage here and we are cleaning up.
Yeah. If I, if I may, I think where you were, maybe perhaps where you were going Commissioner, I mean, how, at the time that this occurred, so we receive permit and plans as to what the contractors are going to do. This happened?
They, they applied for these right away permits last year in 2021.
And, but the work began?
The work began in Boca Seaga. I would have to look at my.
But sometime toward the latter part of 2021?
Correct.
When, so we do have inspectors, inspection that occurs, they're not out there 24 hours or the entire time that they're there. Often we don't know when the subcontractors will be out there. These are right of way permits that are a little bit odd and I'm, and I say the word odd, they are no fee permits. We're not allowed to charge fees per Florida statutes. That changed in 1999 or 2000 when the legislature created the communication services tax. They did away with some taxes and fees and one of them were right of way permit fees and then every jurisdiction received a communication service tax rate that is different for each jurisdiction. And I can go into a lot more detail on that because I was here when that happened and I actually presented that item at, with the city I was working. But it created issues because no fee permits then kind of took a backseat. And I'm not saying that that's what happened here, but in every city that I'm aware of in Florida, they're kind of, they're, they're not in the forefront of actual review. Should they be? The answer is yes. Because when any utility is on our right of way, there is the possibility that there could be damage. They're aware of that, we are aware of that. Could these have been prevented? Very, very difficult to have prevented any of these. I mean, I, and I've been in three, in three states and four cities where similar occurrences just happened and it's very difficult. And 20 years ago, I was at a city just north of here where it was a disaster, literally, with this same company. They had a different name then, but it's still the same company, some of the same personnel. And we had meetings in here, since I've been here, explaining that this is unacceptable, but it's been happening. It's almost as if for them, it's a cost of doing business. For utilities, it's a cost of doing business that they know that there will be some damage. And their first response to, to cities, and again, I've had this experience in four cities, oh, well, the utilities were not marked properly.
Correct.
The road was not marked properly. We did not know what may or may not have been there. And, and we understand errors occur, but it, it is very, we're as frustrated as any resident. I'm as frustrated because I've been in local government almost 28 years and have dealt with this over and over and over again. And again, it's, it's become a cost of doing business. It's like delivery companies getting parking tickets because they refuse to just pull over, you know, where you're able to and they'll take the ticket and they budget for the cost of doing business of paying citations, for example. So I, I wish I had a, a better or a more positive answer, but as I've shared with all of you, and I, I don't recall if I mentioned it here publicly, Frontier is not allowed to do anything in, nor their subcontractors within any of our rights of way until all of these repairs are made. And there are still other repairs.
Correct.
We had no idea, for example, they bore right through some of our storm drains, some of, well.
132nd and Boca Seaga Ave. I was there this morning. Yes.
So again, very frustrating, we're, we will get these corrected and ensure that Duke Energy is pretty good by the case, because they're the ones that are currently out there. And I mean, interrupt you, a final thing, we cannot regulate directly Gulf Boulevard or 150th Avenue because they are DOT roads. However, if we do see something, we will notify our DOT contacts.
No, it's unfortunate the repairs have to be made.
Right.
I just wanted to use this forum to allow residents to understand what they can expect in the coming weeks.
Right. I would like to add for the record that with both Boca Seaga Ave, 137th Avenue Circle and the Crystal Island Project, we pulled all of those permits back prior to them starting and have a meeting with Frontier to let them know we have the as-built. We know exactly what's in the ground. We just built those projects and we actually put specific comments on those permits to ensure that if there were damage, they had to fix it the right way. So we have all that documentation. I've, we have pictures, we, we have everything. I've been in contact with Frontier. They are now not really responding to me, but they are aware of everything that's going on.
Megan, the, they will be out there for three weeks or four weeks?
We should have, we're fighting the tides right now unfortunately. So 132nd, there was a couple of different issues this morning, but they not bored through it once, they bored through it twice. So.
But I meant Lilian and Crystal.
We're going to finish 132nd first.
Oh, 100, I'm sorry, right.
And then that same crew will then be going to Crystal and Lilian, probably a few weeks, dependent on tides, unfortunately.
But it won't be a complete road or street closure while?
No, no, no. We'll leave one lane of traffic open at all times. And hopefully they didn't hurt the structural fabric. Hopefully it's just right over the top of it and there's a void. That's best case scenario, but we don't want to leave it because then eventually it's going to be a dip versus a bump.
Yeah, I, that's something I want to be sure that's done well.
Absolutely.
And that is repaving it. I get upset every time I drive down Gulf Boulevard around 112th where Gulf Boulevard was torn up and they did a patch and you almost need a four wheel drive to get over it.
That's when they don't properly compact.
And why, yeah, but why they let that go and don't say, hey, y'all get back out here and get this thing right is beyond me. And I hope we do that when a, when a contractor does a rotten job on something is hold their feet to the fire.
Don't you worry, Mr. Mayor, I will hold their feet.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Sorry, and your first question, Commissioner Kerb, with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission for the markers, we did an inventory or that we were requested by Fish and Wildlife Commission of all our markers. As I've shared with you before, they stated that our ordinance is not up to their standard. So we will, I'll be getting with Mr. Trast to, to go over that ordinance and get that corrected. We do know that we are missing some markers and I think we have others that we're replacing.
We need to do an overhaul. I've been working with Pinellas County on that and we, everybody, they're trying to bring the county up to their regulations. So unfortunately we take the back burner on that, but we will be replacing our signs, some pilings that are missing.
Also, no swim buoys at John's Pass.
We just met two days ago regarding that and we're reaching out to DOT for the area under the bridge. And then we discussed about, we are getting at least what, eight or 10 signs from the county that we will be adding along, once you, you leave the DOT bridge area out toward the jetty and then at the entrances toward the beach from the John's Pass Park parking lot.
How about around the jetty offshore where the shoal is?
That is a designated swim area by a permit through FWC. So if we, we have, out on the beach, we have three different permits for the swim areas, designated swim areas, and John's Pass Park is one of those. That goes from the jetty to 131st is designated as a swim area.
I was in a discussion with Linda Cheney just this past week. She said if we had any problems on that to get with her, she's got the ear of FWC and FDEP and she will personally call them and have them fast track something to where we can get no swim buoys out there.
We, we have the buoys, but we just would have to change our permit to make that a non-swim area versus a designated swim area.
Well, she's, she's saying though, if you're, if you have any problems getting that done, let her know.
Okay.
Yep, we'll look to do that.
Okay.
And you were, I mean, just off the, I mean, a certain distance from the jetty.
Off the jetty, where the, yeah, where the, where it's all shoaled up and where, where you can wade out there where the currents are on the tip of the jetty.
Do that.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Megan. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, next is agenda setting. There is something I would like to add and that is the Court of Honor over at Patriot Park. We've talked about this for a number of years. This was Commissioner Hodges' kind of baby when she was here and it hasn't gone anywhere and I'd like to see us get that moving. I know the American Legion will help with some funding, the VFW will help with some funding. And that's a project that, that was near and dear to Nancy and, and out of respect for Nancy, I would like to see us get that done.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, can I make one suggestion before I even get in? I, I've got one thing to add to it, but if you look at our calendar coming up, we have a budget workshop on, I'm sorry, yeah, budget workshop on the 20th, which is next Wednesday. Would anybody be opposed to moving our workshop, our regular workshop to the same date? So we'll go through our budget workshop at four o'clock, do our workshop at six, and then we get what we can call our little summer break from the 20th until our regular meeting on the 10th. This way we're not coming back two consecutive, three consecutive weeks in a row to come out here and have a meeting. And plus I'm not going to be here on the 27th.
Run that by me one more time.
Can we move, can we move our Wednesday, July 27th, regular workshop meeting to next week, Wednesday, July 20th? Bump it up a week and just back it up behind, we're going to be here anyway for a budget workshop on, on the 20th.
At four. So you want to move the workshop to six o'clock?
Yep, perfect.
And that gives us two hours for the budget, budget meeting? Is that acceptable to?
So you have to start, just, you may have to. The budget meeting starts at, at four, is that right?
Yes, at 4:00 PM.
So that, and then we have?
The workshop at six.
Is that going to be enough time for us to get, get done and get, I mean, I'm fine with moving the day. I just want to make sure we have.
Well, yeah, that way if the budget meeting needs to run long, we're okay.
Okay.
You know? If it doesn't run long, we can run, get a bite to eat and come back.
We're fine. I think staff and I are fine with that.
Good for me.
Thank you, guys. And the only thing I'd like to add to it is, and I know this one is probably near and dear to the mayor's heart as well. I got a call from a current member of the Civil Service Commission who's been on it for a while. And there was, and we're not going to rehash old history, but there was a situation that happened a while ago and we never really changed the parameters to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And I think we need to look at some of the bylaws that we do have as far as the Civil Service Commission to just prevent from something like that happening again. And I'm not going to get into it all tonight. We can go through it then. I don't think the conversation is going to take that long. But I, I think we need to put some, some stopgaps and some checks and balances in place in order to assure ourselves that we don't get into the same situation that we got in a couple of years back.
On the workshop?
On the workshop, yeah. I'd just like to discuss it and go through it just so everybody's aware of it. I know there's a, for the most part, there's a brand new commission. Actually, heck, it's a completely new commission from what was up here when that all happened. But it was something that needed to be identified and it'll end up saving us a lot of money down the road if we just put, squash it and get, get a different plan in place to make sure that, and I know John knows what I'm talking about, but we'll, I'll walk you through everything and we'll, we'll kind of, and like I said, we're not going to regurgitate old history. I don't want to bring up bad wounds, but I think we have to have something in place to make sure that we don't have to ever go down that road again.
Okay. Good idea. So, does anyone else have anything they'd like on the workshop? Just keep in mind, if it, if it's something that can wait until August, that might be a good idea. So we don't have a workshop that's lasting all hours of the night?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, we were based from prior meetings and what's, we could move, I think we had, we were planning on discussing a food truck amendment to our code, but we think we could move that to August. We were also going to discuss our solid waste recycling, which we are a little bit of a time constraints. I think we do need to discuss that next week. We had the no smoking on the beach and the parks. That's probably a little bit due to the timing with other cities. Do you want to discuss?
Well, we can, yeah, we can bring it up. It was discussed at the Big C. St. Pete Beach is working on an ordinance now. The consensus of the Big C was that we present the ordinance that St. Pete Beach is working on to each of our commissions so that we try to have a consistent ordinance up and down the beach so that somebody walking on the beach from Madeira to Reddington, the laws don't change on this imaginary line. That's the, the city limits. So as we have done with other ordinances, to maintain that consistency up and down the beach.
Okay. We, we also have a. Okay. We, we also have a, a little bit of a time for the variance process for deck permits to disc, excuse me, for dock permits, not deck permits, at next month at the workshop. And we do have a lien settlement offer proposal that is a little bit time-consuming. And then the forward, we had a forward Pinellas agreement extension. We can move that to August.
The lien settlement, is that going to be a Shades meeting or?
No, it's not. It would just be discussion. It's on lien on 734 Sunset Cove, the Henigan property.
Okay.
I'm sorry. And we had to discuss pervious pavers? Do you want to, we could move that to August?
Okay. That's fine with me because we're getting pretty full.
Okay. But now I think we have too much for August. So what are we going to plan for next week? We're going to talk about the solid waste? We are or are not going to talk about smoking on the beach?
We'll have, okay. Solid waste, no smoking on the beach, the variance process for dock permits, the lien settlement offer, the Court of Honor, and the Civil Service Commission bylaws.
Okay. That's...
That's six items.
Is that plenty?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
But as, there'll be a nice break until the August.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. But just for right now, fireworks. Did you guys like the, I mean, I really liked what we had at Cooper Gala, and I kind of thought we were leaning towards that in the future. But the fireworks for the fourth were pretty good.
We did have that. We do need to discuss fireworks, but we'll, we can have that in August. I mean, we have, because the next technically legal day to, for the public to use fireworks is not till New Year's Eve. So we do have some time to, if there's any changes that may be proposed.
Yeah. And I, I would think that the, the money's already budgeted, I would think, next year. So...
Yes, yeah. This is more if we want to, if there's any desire to, no, to regulate fireworks.
Yeah. And whether or not we want three of the smaller fireworks during the year or just the one big one.
Yep.
So, and a lot of people gave us kudos for having it on the third rather than the fourth. So that wouldn't work out next year, but this year was great. Okay. Is that got it? So solid waste recycling, no smoking on the beach, Court of Honor, Civil Service, lien settlement, and dock permits.
Yes.
Okay. Reports and correspondence. First is Board of Commissioners. Has anyone got anything? Okay, I do. Commissioner Kerr asked about the Big C and in fact, went to the last Big C meeting. I don't know how that hit you, but that's just a, a regular deal. And Mike Twitty came, gave us a presentation on, really on, on how it's going with property values. And we're, we're expecting another increase this next year, but probably after that, it will be leveling off, possibly going down. The other thing that was discussed is that Cookie Candy, who is mayor of Indian Rocks, will be, her term will be up on Forward Pinellas. And so they will be looking for another member to represent the Big C. It has to be an elected official. I know there are already two mayors with their names in the hat. And that's Al Johnson of St. Pete Beach and Dave Will of Reddington Beach. If any of y'all are interested in getting your names put in the hat, I would say, let Clara know and she can get a letter to the Big C that you want your name thrown in the, in the ring to be on Forward Pinellas and represent the Big C. And that pretty much covered it.
If I can, thank you, Mayor, for giving a recap on the, on the Big C. I did want to add that Mike Twitty brought to our attention that Pinellas County has a fraud alert that you can sign up for.
Right. They've had that for a couple of years.
Okay, I didn't, I, it was news to me. So thank you.
Yeah. It's a, you can sign up for a fraud alert on your property. So to, so that if there's somebody trying to claim that they own your property and frauding you, you can get an alert from the county that there's some suspicious activity going on, on it. And you can call the, call his office and they'll get you signed up. That's all I've got. Mr. Trask, have you got anything for us?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, I think you've pretty much covered it already.
Yes, thank you. Nothing further.
Ms. Van Blargen, have you got anything for us?
I do not.
Okay. And I...
Do not? Okay.
I can wait till next week, but I will not be here for the August, I think it's August 10th meeting. I'll be out of town for the League of Cities meeting. So it'll be in Doug's capable hands. So I'll be, I'll just be watching you on YouTube and laughing that night. That's all I've got. Anyone else got anything? Okay. With that, this meeting is adjourned at 8:15 PM.